Playing here, loves riding the trains and seeing the trains and being able to climb up inside and get in them. What sound does the train make?
Two-two.
Two-two.
Absolutely free admission to come here. There's very few places you can come in Los Angeles where the parking is free and the visitor ship is free. Makes it open to all people in Los Angeles.
The kids can be kids. There's lots of space and you can always have your eye on your kids so it feels very, feels like a very safe space to have them in.
This is one of the wonderful picnic areas that's available for rent here on Saturdays and Sundays at Travel Town. You can have a birthday party here, you can have an anniversary party here, you can have a retirement party here, and where else can you go and have a beautiful steam locomotive as your background? This engine is called the Mariposa. It was built in 1864 and it is actually the oldest engine we have here at Travel Town. At the time, the Transcontinental Railroad was being built. I tend to look at the completion of the Transcontinental Railroad as like landing on the moon. It was a technological advance that was just so amazing that it happened in the United States and this engine was part of it. This is our Fred Harvey exhibit. And Fred Harvey was someone who's essentially the forerunner of fast food restaurants. Fred Harvey set up many of his restaurants on the Santa Fe route. There was a very famous movie called The Harvey Girls that sort of highlighted that that starred Judy Garland.
Black shirt, waist, cuffs neat and trimmed. The apron must be spotless from the collar to the head.
The apron must be spotless and must have the proper swirl. That's the first requirement of a Harvey girl.
And the whole exhibit just sort of features some of the elegance that traveling on the trains had. We have here a beautiful waiting station. Sometimes I just sit here and think about how many people would have sat here waiting for the next train to come in and where they were going to and where they were coming Travel Town is located right off the Forest Lawn exit of the 134 freeway, very near to where the 5 and the 134 come together. We're kind of this hidden gem that people don't know about.
All aboard!
All that great work wouldn't be possible without the many volunteers that make Travel Town an LA gem. If you'd like to get involved, visit the foundation's website at traveltown.org. From antique trains to abstract modernism, Los Angeles continues to make local attractions and high-end art more accessible and affordable for SoCal families. The latest example: free admission days at the Museum of Contemporary Art. Check out how Moca does family fun.
We are kicking off free general admission for everybody here in Los Angeles and beyond and we're having a great festival all day to celebrate with our community. Our board president Carolyn Clark-Powers made an announcement in late May. She gave a gift of $10 million to make this possible for Moca to offer free general admission for everybody.
This is huge for the city. We know that access to art is everything. When a young person or visitor or somebody who's even lived a couple blocks away knows that it is free, we find that admission goes up, that the richness of experience goes forward, and LA is the art capital of the world right now.
Now that they're making it more accessible for people to come and the fact that they're not charging is amazing for people that, you know, like say like this is something that's great. You get to learn, you get to be a part of the experience without having to spend money and stuff. It's gonna bring a lot more people and I think that's really important.
No longer is there an excuse for people not to come to Moca. It is free every day, the permanent collection is free, we offer tours, there are free art making activities for kids, you know, during the month. Check out moca.org and see what we have to offer.
I agree Mayor Garcetti, access to art is everything. In fact, the Central Library has an art exhibit where you can actually leave your own personal impression. The exhibit is called "The Autograph Book," and our own Sayida Pagan dropped by to make her mark.
It's an autograph collection like no other at the Los Angeles Central Library. Hundreds of signatures, artwork, and writings from both the famous and everyday people dating back more than a century.
One of my favorites came in from a library patron and they wrote "I just want to be a part of it," which sort of sums up the sentiment of some of these people who are leaving their marks in the collection.
Curators say it was all librarian Charles Loomis's idea. In 1906, he sent out this letter with blank stationery. He instructed notable people of the day to simply improve this enclosed page. Educator Booker T. Washington wrote back. Writer and activist Helen Keller also responded. And Langston Hughes sent in a poem. Catherine Lee Bates filled the page with the words to her song "America the Beautiful." But since then, the collection has become much more inclusive. People from all walks of life have sent in their autographs, their writings, and more.
What's really special about the exhibit is the way that it was expanded by the foundation and the city librarian to include modern Angelenos and current people who are doing things.
There is street art on display, graffiti replicated from the streets of Los Angeles, and images telling compelling, thought-provoking stories. This one rare exhibit features thousands of signatures presented to the astronauts after the moon landing. The exhibit also includes a book. It is simply titled "The Autograph Book of L.A."
I feel like it helps people leave their mark on history. It's a way that a person can individually show their mark on something.
I think it's actually nice really because, like I was saying earlier, it's just nice to see like not only the people that have come through the library or like the autographs that have been like put down on paper, but also just like the development of like writing actually.
Only the main highlights of the collection are included in the library exhibit. Hundreds of other pieces are housed in the rare book section of the L.A. Central Library.
I thought it would be fun to add my name to the collection, so here's what I wrote. "I'm here at the L.A. Central Library doing a very fun story about a wonderful autograph collection. Sayida Pagan, for L.A. This Week."
And there's another book arts exhibit happening at the Central Library. The Coretta Scott King Awards was established to recognize exceptional work from new African-American authors and illustrators. Anna Marcos visited the library to see how these works are now a celebrated visual art exhibit.
African-American children's book authors and illustrators haven't always had their voices heard in mainstream literature, but this exhibit celebrates 50 years of putting those voices front and center.
So many times, our stories are not told and so individual children may grow up and never see themselves in the pages of books. And it's important for them to see themselves reflected in that manner and to be proud of who they are.
The L.A. Public Library is hosting the exhibit called Voices, celebrating the Coretta Scott King Illustrator Awards. The artwork comes from books that have won the prestigious award. It highlights both books and illustrations by exceptional storytellers of the African-American experience. Two determined librarians created the awards back in 1969 after attending an American Library Association conference and getting a sort of a wake-up call.
African-American authors were not recognized over the years, and this was in 1969, and that's how the Coretta Scott King Award came about, to recognize outstanding authors and illustrators of children's literature, African-Americans.
First one I saw was the illustration of Rosa Parks, which made me think about the struggles and how different things were not that long ago.
The exhibit features more than 100 prize-winning book illustrations. The topics range from slavery to African creation myths to hairstyles.
For instance, Crown is one of the most recent titles and it shows an African-American young boy after he gets his hair done and how his self-esteem is boosted and so that's really important for young people to see as well.
There is even a little cubbyhole children's reading area stocked with some of the award-winning books. So what are college students doing reading children's books in a circle? We wanted to know.
The illustrations are beautiful and I want to do children's book illustrations, so I love seeing these and it's so well-done. But yeah, they had this really cool page right here and it just like folds out and it shows like the whole team of the first colored World Series.
For me personally, growing up being African-American, I didn't have any books with like kids that looked like me. Even reading this book about a young musician, it was really powerful because I felt like I really had to pave my way to become a musician when I was 10-years-old.
The exhibit will be on display at the L.A. Public Library's downtown branch until February
Do you remember home economics or shop class when you were in high school? Well, things have really changed since then. Maria Hall Brown gives us a look at an organization doing great work on vocational skills. Maria?
Thanks, Umeema. I had an opportunity to sit down with the folks from Skills USA, a remarkable organization that have been helping youth find their way for decades. In this ever-changing, complicated world, for a young person determining what they want to be when they grow up is also partnered with who they want to be and how to get there. But fortunately, there's a wonderful organization to help. I'm delighted to be joined by Clay Mitchell, the State Director of Skills USA. Thanks for being here.
My pleasure, Maria.
All right. Skills USA obviously has a vast array of things that they offer young people in determining, you know, what course they want to take in their lives. What does Skills USA do?
So Skills USA is a career technical student organization, so that's a nice education jargon that talks about how do we help students make quality decisions for careers and what do they need to do to get there so they can be successful in life? People from business and industries that are looking for our products, which are our students, come to an event. The California event is about 3,200 students and the national event is about 8,000 students. They come in, they have their time slot, and they perform whatever skill or task that they have set up from business and industry with their knowledge and their skill set.
Clay and I are delighted now to be joined by Loretta Cabaludal, who is the State Membership and Chapter Coordinator. Welcome, welcome, welcome.
Thank you.
All right, so what is it that you say to people or young people or parents or anyone that might be interested now in being part of Skills USA?
Whenever I have the opportunity to talk to a student's parent or guardian, I like to celebrate that their student has chosen this as a path. In most cases, you hear college is that direction and when a student says that "I want to be a carpenter" or "I want to be a chef," I celebrate that.
There's such a huge need. I mean, I think we forget all of the things that we need in order to have, you know, a good life and good lifestyles.
There's such a huge need, especially here in California. There's a big skills gap and we want to lead the way in bridging that.
Clay and I are delighted now to be joined by an alum of Skills USA and a very talented one at that, Brian Glispy. Hello.
Hi.
How are you?
Just fine.
So you're, as an alum, you went straight out of one of the programs into a full-time gig in broadcasting, which you have been enormously successful in.
I learned about incident replay, I learned about maintenance repair, I learned about the cameras, I learned, and then I went on to become one of the supervisors over at Fox on Fox Sports. The message really is, you gotta learn it from the ground up. There's no easy way to do it.
If you want to learn more about Skills USA, it's really easy. You just log on to skillsusa.ca.org.
Skills USA has been guiding students' growth to more productive and successful careers since 1965. Show your love at a carnival in Skid Row, indulge in a day of donut delicacies, and discover the best-kept secret in used book thrifting. All this and more in Things to Do. The Skid Row Carnival of Love is coming back to downtown Los Angeles. This free carnival event provides vital resources like health checks, haircuts, and ID cards alongside music, entertainment, and balloons, all in one 20,000-square-foot block party. Come down and show your love at the sixth annual Skid Row Carnival of Love, happening Saturday, January 25th, beginning at 10:00 a.m. For more information, check out their listing on Eventbrite. Love donuts? Who doesn't? So come check out L.A.'s sweetest weekend bash at Donut Fest L.A., brought to you by Indy Brewing Company. Enjoy a Sunday fun day filled with sampling donuts, enjoying beer, sipping coffee, and more. It's a tasty event for the whole family. Donut Fest L.A. kicks off Sunday, January 26th, beginning at 1:00 p.m. For more details, check out their listing on Eventbrite. Attention nonfiction aficionados calling all book sales loose, K-Y-A and urban fiction peeps, you are all invited to discover the best used book sale in East Hollywood. The Los Feliz branch library holds a huge used book sale made up of books from every genre: children's books, art books, showbiz books. You never know what you'll find at the Los Feliz monthly used book sale, happening every fourth Saturday. The library is located on Hillhurst and Franklin Avenues in the heart of Los Feliz. For details, call 323-913-4710. And that's a look at some things to do. That's it for this edition. I'm Umeema Rashidi. From all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube.
Let's protect our wildlife together. Please, no smoking in Griffith Park.
Good morning and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Friday, January 24th, and this council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. Mr. Clerk, we have a quorum. Let's run through the agenda.
Blumenfield, Bonham, Buscaino, Sidi, O'Harris, Dawson, Weezer, Coetz, Kirkorian, Lee, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson. Ten members present and a quorum, Madam President.
Let's run, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Lee moves and Mr. Coetz seconds next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Buscaino moves and Ms. Rodriguez seconds next.
Madam President, items one through thirteen are items for which public hearings have been held. A committee report for item one has been posted, circulated, and is now before council.
So, members, are there any specials on any of these items? Okay, let's go ahead and vote on these items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Item's passed. What's next?
On the supplemental agenda, item fourteen is an item for which public hearing has been held. A transportation committee report has been posted, circulated, and is before council.
Members, are there any specials on any of these items? Okay, let's go ahead and vote on these items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Madam President, that takes council back to presentations.
Good morning, colleagues. I am very excited to be sharing with you all this morning and the rest of the city, a moment that we've been able to capture in the northeast San Fernando Valley. You know, so often our work is around trying to help transform our communities, and I mean, we are dedicated to doing that each and every day in collaboration with city departments, helping to transform our spaces and improve the quality of life. But sometimes, very simple acts of art installation in itself can be very transformative, and I'm very proud to be sharing with all of you today, a moment that we were able to achieve in the northeast San Fernando Valley, an iconic project, Rushing Waters, which is a nearly ten thousand square foot mural installation at the intersection of San Fernando Road and Paxton, right off the 118 freeway. And I want to, I'm joined today by some incredible talent emanating from the northeast San Fernando Valley, Levi Ponce, Juan Reyes, Christian Cardenas, Erica Friend, Peter Mendez, Jose Javier, Hector Arias, and, oh, is Lisa here today? Oh, Lisa's here. Lisa, who was incredibly gifted in sharing her time with us to capture the transformation of a wall that has just been notoriously known for its blight in the community within the MetroLink right-of-way. And so, I want to queue up a video to share with you all right now. Thank you. Colleagues, what you need to know about this wall is that for, gosh, decades, it has just been the home to graffiti and blight, and the challenges associated with doing this project. And it was, it wasn't a first attempt. In fact, many had talked about doing this type of project for years, and it never materialized. But I want to thank my team for their diligence in making sure that we could get all the permissions that were required, particularly working with MetroLink, to have access. We all had to take, myself included, took a safety training. We're not allowed to encroach the right-of-way without safety training, with flags and all the safety requirements that are, that are required to be in that space. But if not for the talent and leadership of our local, homegrown community artist, Levi Ponce, and the collective work of everyone here, were we able to achieve this very special project? Not since 1978, when Judy Baca did her mural in the LA River, has a project of this scale been attempted and completed. So, for the San Fernando Valley, this is a source of huge pride, for the northeast San Fernando Valley in particular, when so many individuals are commuting to our area for either the local Costco or to get to Silmar. This is really, this location is a hub for many folks that are entering our community. And what we managed to achieve was a transformation in how people see who we are and the history of this area. Taking what has historically been obstacles and objects that have divided our communities, whether you consider the bodies of water that bisect our neighborhoods, or the freeways, whether it's the 118, the 210, the 5, those are all areas that are captured in this mural. But we're transforming the way we see these spaces and taking some of the iconic images of areas like the gateway to our city's water supply, which is in my district at the Cascades, to the Hanson Dam recreation space. All of these images, and, of course, the fact that we're on native ground, and capturing that all of the imagery that reflects our history, our future, and embracing who we are and really reflecting on it in a much more positive way. This space has been transformed and has really brightened up the area, and I am so proud to have been working with a local team of artists to help make this a reality. They did it in twelve days, which is remarkable. But it was with their diligence and their talent that they were able to do that. Decades of blight transformed in twelve days. That is the level of urgency and expediency with which we are working in the northeast San Fernando Valley, and I couldn't do it without some incredible local talent. And here with me today, he's no stranger to many of you, but we are so proud, this local Pocuima native, Levi Ponce.
Thanks, Monica. Thank you, Monica, for having us, and the rest of you as well. It's a great honor to be amongst you here, amongst great, great company. I always get nervous about coming up here, but I really only have one thing to say, and this accomplishment is not really an accomplishment of individuals. It's really about a greater vision and an example of what can happen when our community leaders come together with segments of the population, which are often disenfranchised. You got to realize that this wall was often full of blight because of graffiti and acts of vandalism, but it's the very same community that used to go around committing these acts of vandalism, you know, basically, it's the same kids, the same kids that used to go around writing on this wall painted this mural. And it's an example of what happens when these kids are trusted, when they're giving a plat, when they're given a platform to perform on, when they're, you know, given a chance, when they're given a voice, when they're heard, when they're given the light. So, I just want to thank everybody for the opportunity to show what our community can do, and we'll see you guys at the next one.
Thank you, Levi, and to all the artists for your participation in this iconic art. I, you know, I drive by it all the time, and it just brings a smile to my face. But what's been, and, yes, it hasn't been tagged, but, you know, what's been really exciting is how the level of pride that the community has shared because of this transformation. It really has been a historic endeavor, one that I am proud to be associated with such incredible local talent to have been a part of, but one that I know is just emblematic of the continued work that will, that will occur in the northeast San Fernando Valley in partnership with, with some amazing community leaders. So, colleagues, I have gifted each of you your own copy, framed copy of Rushing Waters. Please hang it proudly. We are incredibly proud of this, and I invite you all to come share. And seeing the transformation of this area, it, it really has transformed this space, brightened up this part of the community, and I'm very proud of all of the local talent that has been part of helping to bring this project to fruition. So, thank you all very much, and with that-
Ms. Rodriguez, can I just say something really quickly?
Of course.
I just want to commend you for your tenacity and your vision to transform this, this part of, of our world, growing up in the neighborhood. This goes to show that you take no, you never take no for an answer, and it just goes to prove once again that women can get it done. So, I want everybody to give this councilwoman a big round of applause, because she has fought the good fight. Having said that, I can attest to what an eyesore this wall has been for decades, and I just wanted to say one more thing. My mother is so, so proud of all of you, and she just cannot stop talking about this mural. She's so proud and so incredibly grateful to you and to the entire muralist. The colors are vibrant. It talks about our history. So, thank you very much for the improvement, and kudos to you, Ms. Rodriguez. You're making it happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Martinez. So, Levi, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, thank you for your continued partnership to all of you. We have certificates for all of you, and thank you for helping to improve our community and give us something even more to be proud of. Thank you.
Okay, one more round of applause. Thank you, guys, for being here. Mr. Weezer, are you ready for your presentation, sir?
Madam President, and it's a great honor to be here this morning. It's bittersweet for the City of Los Angeles as we say a big thank you, and we send off a great public servant here in the city. Our friend, Merdad Moshkassar, is retiring short of thirty-one years from the Department of Transportation. Let's give him a big round of applause. Congratulations. I have known Merdad for many years, and his work has been so instrumental to so many of the things we've accomplished with respect to transportation in Council District Fourteens. And sometimes, it feels like he's part of our own staff, which is a sentiment that I'm sure many other council districts feel as well. In fact, a few years ago, when two of my staff members were getting married and they invited the whole staff, Merdad was also invited, but he not only attended, he showed up in style, and, man, can this guy dance. That was the talk of that wedding. Merdad is the true embodiment of a public servant who serves with dedication, charisma, and diligence. He has ensured that our Department of Transportation remains connected to the needs and concerns of our constituents, making our streets safer for both pedestrians and motorists. Merdad was born on August 30th, 1957, in Shiraz, Iran, and was the third child in a family of four children. From a young age, he had a committed determination to come to the United States to study engineering, which is exactly what he did in December of 1976. By 1991, he fulfilled his dream and graduated from Cal State LA. He embarked on his career working for various engineering firms, but it was on April 30th of 1989 where he would find his true calling. On this day, he was hired as a Transportation Engineer Assistant at the Inter-Agency Coordination Section of the Department of Transportation. From that initial hire, he was promoted consistently and ascended within the department. In 1998, he was promoted to Transportation Engineer Associate Two with the Automated Traffic Surveillance and Control Construction Section. By September of 2007, he was promoted to Transportation Engineer with the Neighborhood Traffic Management Section. And on April 14th of 2010, Merdad was transferred internally to become the new Transportation Engineer to the Department Central District Office, where he served until today's retirement. Merdad truly became an invaluable asset to the city's Department of Transportation, where over the years, he has played a key role in major events and projects such as a Democratic Convention Management in the year 2000, the Citywide Speedway Hump Program, numerous Academy Awards, and numerous other marathons and public events that he managed. I personally cannot thank him enough for all the support he has lent to Council District Fourteen, and I'm sure other council offices that he worked with feel the same. My staff meets regularly with our local engineer, and you could always count on Merdad to make a special appearance at those meetings and provide his guidance on safety issues that our constituents are facing each and every day. Merdad has been our ally in countless community requests, including re-envisioning many of our avenues that trespass Council District Fourteen, making Council District Fourteen the first in many ideas and concepts of complete streets, and also attending to those issues that matter to our constituents, such as putting up stop signs where they have been requesting them for many, many years, traffic signs, parking signs, traffic signals, and colored curb zones, those things that matter to our constituents. Every time we have had an important traffic project in our district, Merdad has been there to find solutions and make sure we deliver for our residents and businesses. He has been there with us every step of the way, and that shows his commitment to the city and to its constituents. And though he was, we are sad to see him leave the family, the city family, I am excited for what lies ahead for Merdad, who is excited to commence his retirement in the company of his family.
I'm the brother.
You're the brother. The brother's here. He is a proud father of three and is looking forward to all future milestones. He is soon to have a son-in-law and is already looking forward to having grandchildren. January 30th will be his official last day, so I'm sure you will be celebrating that, that day with a lot of dancing as well. And now, I'd like to introduce you to our General Manager of the Department of Transportation, Salida Reynolds.
Thank you very much, and thank you, council member, for recognizing Merdad. When I started at the department five and a half years ago, it was very much like starting a new school, and I was greeted with everything that you could imagine. Some, some people were skeptical. Some people were sort of apathetic, but some people welcomed me with a warm heart, and Merdad was one of those people. He invited me in to be part of his family, and so it was easier for me to become part of the LADOT family. He has a generous spirit. He has a warm heart. We are so lucky that he felt called to serve the City of Los Angeles, and I know he's good at his job, which is keeping your constituents happy, because it keeps you happy, and that keeps me happy. And I can sleep better at night knowing Merdad was on the job. He leaves a legacy behind- He leaves a legacy behind of numerous, countless engineers and other folks in the department that he has trained, that have learned how to do their jobs with heart the way that Merdad did. And I know it's, it's bittersweet for you, Merdad, that you're leaving. It's just, it's just bitter for us, because we will just miss you greatly and so proud of all of your accomplishments. Thank you.
And we were just talking earlier about how councilwoman Monica Rodriguez never takes no for an answer. We feel the same about Merdad. When we told him we wanted to do the city's first parklet, he moved forward and thought about how we could get around the various regulations, the city's first bike corral, many, many other concepts that, a lot of times, it's easier just to say no and walk away from, but Merdad always found a way. These are just a few examples of why we love Merdad, and in my 15 years as a councilperson, this is one of my favorites to have worked with all these years. So, thank you so much for your service, Merdad. We really appreciate it, and you've done a great job for the City of Los Angeles. Thank you so much. Now, let's hear from Merdad.
Thank you, thank you. Good morning, councilmembers. Councilmember Weezer, good morning. I'm truly honored for this presentation, and you know better than anybody else that me and your staff and yourself, we just work as a family, and that's why everything happened. We've been able to install many new traffic signals, hundreds of stop signs, many console, I mean, traffic control, safety devices, and to achieve the number-one priority of LADOT, which is improving the safety in all modes of transportation and the quality of life for all the engineers, especially your constituents in Lincoln Heights, Cypress Park, Boyle Heights, Eagle Rock, you name it, we were there for them. But truly, none of this work would have been possible without your great leadership and the great staff in your office, you know, Maryam, Suzie, and your great Chief of Staff, Mr. Paul Habib. Thank you for everything. I enjoyed every moment of working with your office, and I'm so glad and I'm so honored that we were able to accomplish what we accomplished towards the safety of your constituents. We were there for them. At times, we disappointed them, but the majority of the cases, they were happy. We've been able to have many new bike lanes on Colorado, Eagle Rock, and, you know, the Vision Zero program and complete streets. We've done it. But I'd like to get all the credit for this, but unfortunately, none of this work would have been possible without the dedication of my office staff. I want to thank them. Zunay, thank you very much. He worked very closely with your office. He's actually designated engineer to serve your office, and a couple of them have been rotated to other offices. None of this work would have been possible without their dedication. And I really want to, from the bottom of my heart, want to give a special thanks to our field crew, who, in my opinion, are the best in the nation. None of the work that we authorize in the office would have been possible without their dedication of being out there at 5:00 in the morning until 4:00 in the afternoon to install these devices. So if anybody from that office here, I want to thank them. And it's been just an absolute pleasure to, to have been part of LADOT for the past 30 years. I consider them from the first day, being my family, and it's been just an honor. I don't even know how these 30 years has gone by. That's how, how much I really enjoyed being part of that, that team. You know, I had the pleasure of working with other councilmembers. Councilmember Price, I love you. We've both worked very closely together, but I'll miss all of you, and I may be leaving LADOT, but I assure everybody, LADOT is not retiring. They're continuously added, and under the great, great leadership of Mrs. Salida Reynolds, I assure you, you're in great hands. And if you ask me, I may be biased, but we are the best department in the City of Los Angeles. So, with that, with, to all of your staff, Mr. Habib, it's been a pleasure serving you and your constituents, and you guys have been my family and will stay my family. I may be leaving LADOT, but I'm not leaving you guys. And Zunay, I'll be there for your second child as I was for the first one. Zunay, who is one of your former employees in CD 14. Nate, I'm honored. You honored me by coming here this morning. I really appreciate it. Good luck with the baby, and I want to thank everybody else, and I appreciate it from the bottom of my heart.
Mr. Weezer, we have one member on the queue that loves to say something, Mr. Price.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Weezer, thank you for bringing this tremendous community asset to, to our chambers today. Merdad is really a, a real hero in our community, you know. He's the king of safety and the king of signs, and we, we appreciate him on, on both fronts. But your commitment to our, our city is, and to the city family is just well appreciated. Well-appreciated. We know, we wish you success in all your continuous endeavors, and we know that you'll always be a part of the LA City family. Congratulations.
It's been an absolute pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, councilmember.
Back to you, Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Madam President. And now, we'd love to present this resolution to Merdad, and it reads, "Now therefore be it resolved that by the adoption of this resolution, the Los Angeles City Council recognizes and congratulates Merdad Majkassar, who with grace, honor, and devotion has worked tirelessly to serve the City of Los Angeles for almost 31 years, to make our streets safer for both pedestrians and motorists. Thank you for your diligent efforts, and congratulations on a well-deserved retirement."
Thank you, councilmember.
Ready for your presentation?
Well, that was quite a performance. Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year.
Thank you to the East West Foundation for bringing us the ancient tradition of the Chinese Lion Dance to council chambers. Once again, the Lion Dance has been a part of the Chinese culture for thousands of years. It's one of the most important traditions of the New Year, Lunar New Year celebration, because the lion is a symbol of power, wisdom, and good fortune, and is believed to chase away evil spirits and bring happiness, longevity, and good luck. You know, we have many special guests here in chambers today, and I'd like to take a moment to recognize a few of them. We have representatives from the Chinese, Chinese, Korean, and Thai consulates. Thank you so much for being here. We really appreciate you, you being a part of today's performance. And this is obviously a diverse showing of individuals to help us celebrate the Lunar New Year here in City Hall and be, on behalf of the city. We would like to thank you for being here today. I am pleased to be here alongside several of my colleagues to observe and celebrate the Lunar New Year, and I am also grateful to be in a city where we can appreciate and experience the intersection of so many cultures that make up our global community of Los Angeles. This holiday is one that's celebrated by billions across the world. The Lunar New Year, also known as the Spring Festival in China or the Solal in Korean, marks the end of the coldest days of winter, and it is a time to welcome the spring and new beginnings and to, more important, most importantly, honor family ties and our ancestors. In the Korean tradition, New Year's is a very special day where we reach out to our elders, and we bow to them and pay our respects to them, and in turn, our elders give us a small gift. And it's a wonderful moment in, in at least my family when that, a child becomes someone who grows up and becomes an adult, and it's a special moment when they refuse the gift from their grandparents and in turn, give a gift to their grandparents and say, "Thank you. It's now my turn to take care of you." And in honor of the Lunar New Year, we have before you a gift of tangerines, which in Chinese tradition are symbols of wealth and good fortune. You also have a Korean rice cake. Rice cakes are traditional Korean dessert made and enjoyed on special occasions. Happy Lunar New Year to everyone, and Happy Year of the Rat, and as is customary to say in Korean, Sehebok Manibadaseyo. in Korean, "Sehebok manibade seyo." I now like to welcome Councilmember Ru to the podium to offer some remarks.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee, and Happy Lunar New Year. Here in Los Angeles, we are home to the largest Chinese, Korean, Filipino, Thai, and many other ethnic communities outside of their home countries, and we are so proud to be the capital of Asian America and to celebrate Lunar New Year. I'm so glad to welcome in this new year for the first time with Councilmember Lee, of course, Councilmember Wesson, who represents Koreatown, Councilmember Ofera, who represents Filipino Town, and our Asian brother who always usually takes lead on this is Councilmember Gil Sedia, who represents Chinatown, who couldn't be here with us today, as well as giving thanks to the Lion Dancers, of course, our longtime pillar in the Asian American community, Charlie Wu, who's joining us, my good friend and president of the Chinatown Chamber of Commerce, Kevin Chen, and Miss China 2020, and of course, many other leaders across Los Angeles' Asian American communities. On this special holiday, we spend time with our loved ones and enjoy good food and good company and honor the energies and elements which keep the universe in balance. This year is the Year of the Rat. I know that doesn't sound too very good, but the rat is actually very valued for its intelligence and cleverness, and the Year of the Rat signifies wealth and surplus. This is also Year of the Metal Rat. The metal signifies the harvest, making this year an important one to take stock of all that you have done and enjoy the bounty of your hard work. Metal is also flexible and rigid at the same time, and just like metal, we all must know when to bend and when to stand for our convictions. Finally, the lucky colors this year are white, blue, and gold, and for I know we have a lot of UCLA grads here, this is our year. But in all seriousness, Lunar New Year is one of the oldest holidays dating back more than 3,500 years, and it's not about horoscopes or superstition. It's about celebrating a new year and all the possibilities it carries. It's a time for us to reflect on where we've been and consider where we are going and recommit ourselves to the highest value in our biggest dreams. I personally love celebrating Lunar New Year because only here in Los Angeles can you see the diversity and the joy of this holiday from Chinatown, Koreatown, Filipino Town, and all the Asian American and Pacific Islander communities across Los Angeles. I hope you can join us, and I hope you can celebrate this historic day and Happy Lunar New Year.
As we continue our celebration of the Lunar New Year, I have the pleasure of recognizing the East Wind Foundation for Youth. East Wind has been performing the Lion Dance in council chambers every Lunar New Year for over a decade. Based in the heart of Los Angeles' Chinatown and under the leadership of Ryan Lamb and Wayland Tam, the East Wind Foundation has been making a positive impact in the lives of youth in Chinatown and the surrounding neighborhoods since 1972. East Wind's Lion Dance troupe has appeared in numerous parades, multicultural celebrations, community festivals, and even made movie and television cameos. We are grateful to have you here with us this morning, and on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, I would like to thank you for your continued investment in the city's youth and for another phenomenal, phenomenal performance in celebration of this year's Lunar New Year. So if I can have you join us for this presentation? Wayland?
And Mr. Lee, I have one member on the queue, sir. Mr. Lee, Mr. Wu, we have one member on the queue. Go ahead. Mr. Wesson? Mr. Wesson, did you want to speak on this?
Yes. Yes, I did. First, let me just say Happy Lunar New Year. Let's give all of the people that are here today the kind of round of applause that they deserve, please. You know, this is a very, very important celebration that we do every year, and we really appreciate that you bring in vegetarian lions, all right? We, as Angelinos, should really consider ourselves blessed and lucky that we are exposed to so many different cultures, so many different holidays, so many different positive things, things that really bring us together, and I'm just happy because we have the best of all worlds. So I just want you to know, this celebration is not only important to you, it's important to the entire city and lord knows, important to this council. Again, Happy Lunar New Year. Thank you, guys, for coming in.
Thank you, Councilmember Wesson. And now, colleagues, I have the honor and privilege of introducing someone that needs no introduction to you here in City Hall. At this time, I'd like to announce and introduce Mr. Charlie Wu to everyone. Mr. Wu currently chairs the Workforce Development Board for the City of Los Angeles, to which he was first appointed by Mayor Tom Bradley 24 years ago and reappointed by Mayors Riordan, Han, Viergosa, and Garcetti. Charlie is former chairman of the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce and the only Asian American to lead this business organization in its 130-year history. Charlie serves on a variety of civic organization boards, including the Committee of 100 and the Pat Brown Institute of Public Affairs at Cal State LA. He is also the co-founder and chair of the Center for Asian Americans United for Self-Empowerment, a nonprofit that promotes leadership development and civic engagement in the Asian American community. In his spare time, he oversees an international toy manufacturing company called Megatoys, where he serves as CEO. Megatoys is based here, here in the city of Los Angeles. Charlie, we are pleased to recognize you today for your continued contributions that advance the role and influence of Asian Americans in civic and business engagement in Los Angeles. I know both Councilman Ru and I owe a great deal of gratitude toward you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Lee. Thank you, Councilman Wu. Council President and Member of the City Council, I'm deeply honored to be recognized during the Lunar New Year celebration. I came to this country as a teenager. I got a good education. I had the opportunity to start a business in Los Angeles, and Mayor Tom Bradley inspired me and those in my generation to give back and do something for the country and the city that gave us so much opportunities. He appointed me to be on a board of private industry council, later became the Workforce Development Board, with the mission to really create economic and job opportunities for the residents of Los Angeles. I was fortunate enough to be reappointed as commission chair by Mayor Riordan, Mayor Han, Mayor Viergosa, and now Mayor Garcetti, and I was told that in the history of Los Angeles, I've been the longest-serving commission president, so I'm deeply honored to be able to give back to the city. During those years working in the city, I became a good friend with the only other Asian American elected to the City Council, Mike Wu. When Mike left the office, we discussed how could we, as a community, encourage and open the doors for those that come behind us to have the same opportunity to give back, and that's why we founded this organization called Center for Asian Americans United for Self-Empowerment, just to develop the leadership skill in our community, encourage civic engagement so that we can contribute to this great city. And to my generation, Councilman Lee and Councilman Wu are truly the next generation emergent leaders that carry on the torch. It is really an honor to work with them, to open doors for those that come behind us, to contribute and enjoy the fruits of all our labor, and I will be working with you to make sure those that come behind you, Councilman Lee and Councilman Wu, to also have the opportunity to contribute, and have a deep gratitude that I accept this honor as encouragement that we should do more for the next generation. Thank you very much. Happy, prosperous, and healthy Lunar New Year. Thank you.
Councilmember CDO is unable to join us today, but we just would like to introduce the Chinatown Court. We have the Queen, Cory Chan, First Princess Angela Zhao, Second Princess Catherine Hung, Fourth Princess Victoria Kua, and Miss Friendship Nakomak. Can we have a big round of applause for them? Last but not least, we have a special guest joining us here today. I believe State Senator Maria Elena de Rosas is in right here. We'd just like to recognize you for being a part of this performance. So, thank you very much, colleagues. We appreciate you celebrating the Lunar New Year with us.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, I believe we have a special one. Do you want to go ahead and speak to that?
Yes, Madam President. Special motion one, motion Price-Wesson, has been circulated and posted. It is available for any interested parties to sign up for on the kiosk as well in case they'd like to speak. I believe the city attorney will speak to the findings.
Mr. City Attorney, go ahead and make the findings for this special one item.
Thank you, Madam President. Let me recite the findings as I understand them by the maker of the motion. Since the posting of the agenda, the County Board of Supervisors approved a motion to partner with the state to site trailers from interim housing for homeless families in LA County. One site for up to 10 trailers is a city-owned parking lot at 8509 South Broadway. The county has proposed to make improvements to that parking lot in preparation for the trailers. Immediate action is required to instruct various offices and departments in the city to work with the county to help place the trailers and to make necessary legal arrangements with the counties. So, we should have two votes. First, we should vote on the findings now. If the findings are passed, then we can take public comment on the item and the vote on the substance of the motion later on.
Well, we have cards on this item. If I call your name, please come up. Oh, I'm sorry. We need to vote on the findings. Let's go ahead and open the row. Close the row and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, the findings have been adopted. We're going to go ahead and call the speakers on this item. Claudia Oliveira, are you here? Come on up. And you're speaking on this item, special one. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Claudia Oliveira, downtown Los Angeles neighborhood council. I'm co-chair of government liaison, secretary and historic court resident director here in my private capacity. I am in favor of this motion, and any funds, the location is excellent, and any funds there related to provide the operations of any navigation center, I think should be our highest priority, and we should be able to look into cutting as much red tape as possible. Thank you so much. I have more time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Daniel Gus, followed by Eric Previn.
Councilmembers, Daniel Gus, this is a great idea, excellent idea, especially if it's done in conjunction with the whole hospital issue I know you're pursuing right now, but there is a bigger way to be more efficient and help more people. You see the movie productions around the city where we have gigantic catering tents that cost a few thousand dollars rather than a few hundred thousand dollars. You should be looking into these catering tents, not just trailers. Get more people covered from the shelter, from the elements, rather than just giving these individual units. It's a good start. It could be a lot better. Look into movie and television production catering tents and then figure out who are the most vulnerable. Is it the mentally ill? Is it abused spouses? Is it homeless people with animals? Is it children? It needs to be prioritized because the more you house, the more that are going to come to Los Angeles, but a good start.
Mr. Gus, you also signed up for general public comment. You want to do that now?
Do that now?
Yeah, go ahead.
Actually, before we do that, Mr. Gus, Mr. Previn, I was informed that you've taken special one that was posted on the board. You've got it in your hand. Would you please put it back so the entire public can see it, please? It's not for you alone. Put it back on the board. Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney, Mr. Gus, go ahead.
Okay.
Councilmembers Daniel Gus, I have a new column in City Watch today about a current commissioner of Mayor Garcetti by the name of Roger Wolfson, currently serving in this building. He was accused of extreme domestic violence by his then-pregnant wife, Noor Al-Shinawi. Mr. Wolfson, as a commissioner, was accused of pushing and shoving his wife when she was pregnant, kicking her out of the house, removal of food as punishment, blocking her from leaving to safety, verbal abuse, telephone harassment, injuring her when he locked her in the garage, allegedly, all allegedly, that he withheld their animals until she disclosed her location. You talk a good game about me, too, but in my column today, I have the Domestic Violence Restraining Order report by Noor Al-Shinawi against Roger Wolfson, a current commissioner who you have repeatedly approved to serve this city. You need to investigate this immediately.
Okay, next speaker, Eric Previn. Mr. Previn, you're speaking on special one and then your general public comment.
Thank you, Council President Martinez. Correct. Special one is, just for the record, not on an agenda at any time. What happened was, the council made a finding that they were unable to know that Governor Newsom was going to make a contribution of some motorhomes for 8509 South Broadway in Council District 9. They had no idea, so it was just a complete surprise, which is really exciting, but even though it was a complete surprise, the county knew and St. Joseph's agreed to pick up the utility and maintenance costs. So I think that there's like a presumption of regularity maybe issue here where everybody's pretending nobody knew, so we could stick it on a late Friday afternoon agenda during the Lunar New Year celebration, but you know, I think that at the end of the day, this is something where people want to do something during this crisis, so putting motorhomes up is cool, but... So putting motorhomes up is cool, but 10 mobile home trailers on city-owned lot, how many people will that accommodate? Because, and how much is involved? And where does this go? And for how long? I feel like when we do non-agendizing of important matters, it makes us feel like we're being ripped off. Now, I know you want me to speak on general public comment.
Yeah, give him his one minute.
So I will, sure. You know, I know you've got a lot of struggles on your hands because you're in way over your head, but I think you have to roll back some of the crazy draconian rules that Herb Wesson put in place. Councilmember Martinez, I know you're a little distracted, but it's important. We can't have committee meetings all starting at the same time, so you can't speak in committee and you can't speak in council. And today, you have, believe it or not, 11 items on the agenda. Not one of them was open to the public, only because you decided to do the most, the highest emergency thing we do, which is no agenda, special number one, for something that seems like we really all knew. You're not doing the job we need. We need to bring the people into the conversation so that we can hold you accountable. And frankly, when I say you, I mean all of you. And there's Anna Aratanian, back from Janus Hans, Paul Krikorian, very sweet. And I don't even see Krikorian today. I guess they're all out campaigning. And by the way, it was very sweet to see Rue and Lee circled once again by a large crowd of people who are providing lunch and lots of donations during election time. So that smells to high heaven. Have a nice day.
Our next speaker is Wayne Spindler, followed by Armando Herman and Antonia Ramirez. You're speaking on special one and general public comment.
Again, thank you to Princess Fable for agendizing this illegal item. Now, I know the intent, and I know Herb Wesson's intent is to try to put more niggas in trailers in the CD9, but it's not going to happen. We all want to put more niggas in tents and into mobile homes, but this is not going to be used for the intended purposes. No, they're going to put no niggas inside these mobile homes, and I want an amendment now on the floor in the name of King, in the name of Gandhi, that only niggas shall reside in those trailers for the first two years, because there's nothing better than a black man learning to live like Arkansas white trash in this goddamn city.
In the name of general public comment.
To the wife beater, Nuri, you fat fucking cunt. You keep appointing Roger Wolfson, the terrorist, to the Animal Services Commission. Mr. Price, you do the same thing. Mr. Weezer, you do the same thing. This woman, this beautiful Egyptian goddess, God, she's a beautiful woman, she gets locked, tortured by this man who's 20 years older than her. You know how it works, Nuri, because back in, you were in CSUN, you used to go out with those older guys, you all did, to get money for school. So you see, Roger Wolfson is a fucking piece of fucking shit, and he's a Me Too, goddamn unconvicted scumbag. Get his ass off of that commission right now. And finally, Jose Weezer, it's all your fault. You recommended Roger Wolfson, you bastard.
Next speaker is Armando Herman, followed by Antonia Ramirez. You're speaking on special one and your general public comment.
Anabon nigger, anabon nigger. I do live in tents no more, nigger. I still live in street homeless bitch, but you, nigger, don't provide, nigger, with home. You should take advice from Trump about, nigger. Nigger cannot survive under HHH in a tent. Nigger need house, big house, big house for nigger. No trailer, no trailer. I am not a rat. You are rats. Rats with big fat ass in a red shirt knows I right. You do not provide Trump advice. And what is Trump advice? Fuck your trailers, fuck your tents. We need to build housing and get people off the street and not in trailers. Wesson, you fucking betrayer of the First Amendment, fuck you.
Your one minute of general public comment.
And remember, Mr. Herman, don't spike him.
That's what the asshole's trying to do when he interrupts me. Mind you, you fucking piece of shit from East City Hall, I have a right to be heard. I have a right to voice my opinion.
Please don't shout into the mic. Mr. Herman, Mr. Herman, stop shouting.
I'm on the chair, the chair of the floor. I'm on the floor, I got the podium, I am the legislative body. Stop fucking want my time.
Stop shouting into the mic, Mr. Herman. Okay, Mr. Herman is disrupting the meeting.
Yeah, Mr. Herman, you're disrupting this meeting, sir.
The chair, ask the House of City Hall, he'll be heard. He continues to interrupt. He continues to involve himself and hamper my free speech. Hamper my free speech. Jennifer H. Cops, this nigger keeps fucking with me.
Your time is up. Thank you. The next speaker is Antonia Ramirez. Ma'am, you're speaking first on special one and then your general public comment.
Ladies and gentlemen, we need a permanent structure home. We don't need trailers. Ladies and gentlemen, you can bring on all the trailers and lump everybody and warehouse them all, but it isn't going to work because you're going to have massive riots. I was in Skid Row at the Hippie Kitchen where I got popped by a fucking female nigger in the face and had to file a battery report, simply because I asked her, excuse me, please. I was moving my shopping cart around, and she popped me in the face. I'm bruised. I filed a police report. I didn't hit her.
Okay, I think this is a little off topic, Ms. Ramirez.
There's so much violence within the homeless community, and no one is addressing it. And again, trailers isn't going to solve the violence with the homelessness. Those two are a dire strait that needs to be fixed. We have homelessness and crime, and they are a massive problem, not only for the homeless people, but also for the civilians who are housed. Again, ladies and gentlemen, we need help stop the violence against law-abiding citizens. And number one.
Your one minute of general public comment.
Legally and morally, do not, do not endorse the vile, wicked, brash, arrogant, disgraceful, evil, and shameful, not to mention lazy-ass public servants Herb Wesson for supervisor, Mark Ridley Thomas for city council, and Jackie Lacy for district attorney. These African-American Democrats are racist, race-baiters, and have grossly contributed to the massive poverty, homelessness, and crime Holocaust. The Sentinel through the LA Watts Times issue Thursday, January the 16th, 2020, says that these corrupted candidate Herb Wesson states that we can tackle the biggest issues facing the community today. Then they go on to the candidate Jackie Lacy, and I will read this laughable, false assertion and portrayal of Jackie Lacy and the DA's office. It says, "District Attorney Lacy's top priority is keeping the streets of Los Angeles County safe from violent and dangerous criminals. She is committed to safeguarding our children from human sex trafficking, and our seniors from financial elder abuse, and our communities from environmental crimes, and threaten our health and our livelihood."
Thank you very much, Ms. Ramirez. Your time is up. Your time is up. Members, that completes our comment for our special one, so let's go ahead and vote on that item. Let's open the row. Close the row and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, item passes. Let's go back to general public comment. Jackie Richardson, are you here? Ms. Richardson, you want to come on up? Followed by Danielle Sosa, Jamie Rodriguez, and Josh Adello.
I have a complaint about the public, some of the buildings that are all glass in this area and other areas. The complaint is necessary because in extreme emergencies, these glass buildings can be considered weapons. One example is the police building across the street and the federal court building, the new one down on First Street. All glass, they have these 500-pound ladders, and they have to be placed against the glass if they want to rescue people, and the ladder will break the glass because it's so heavy. I hope that something can be done about these extreme conditions. If something happens in extreme weather or extreme conditions, these buildings can be considered dangerous weapons.
Are you Danielle Sosa?
Yes.
Good morning. You have one minute of your general public comment.
Good morning. Greetings, Council. I'd like to speak briefly on the social equity program and cannabis retail applications. I'm a longtime participant in the industry, and I'm also a partner to some social equity applicants in Phase Three, Round One. There were 800 applications for 100 slots, and there's a lot of people that are really hopeful that the program is going to work for them and that they're going to be able to participate and gain some equity from this industry. And I'd just like to ask that you guys consider processing all of the applications you received, and if they're compliant locations, they're not zoned out, then go ahead and grant them licenses. I think that would go a long way to really making this program work instead of having a lot of disappointed folks who held on to property for a very long time and aren't getting anything out of it. So I really appreciate you guys' work on this, and I hope you guys will consider that as a pathway moving forward for the social equity program. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jamie Rodriguez, followed by Josh Adello and Arnold Sacks. Go ahead.
Hello, Councilmembers. My name is Jamie Rodriguez. I am a social equity candidate and Phase Three retail applicant for cannabis. I would very much like to ask that you take two actions as far as processing all the applications that were submitted in Phase Three and Round One, and that you also lower the sensitive use distance requirements between cannabis dispensaries to 200 feet, or that you also, oh, and that you also allow locations to transfer if possible as well. I know that it takes a lot to balance the interests of many people. I truly appreciate you working on these issues, and thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Josh Adello here.
How's it going? Good morning. I am also a social equity applicant, and I was one out of the 800 who applied, and I would like to see if you can push to apply or approve all, all applications to give us applicants a realistic chance to have an opportunity to do business in, in the cannabis industry. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Arnold Sacks. And that concludes the speakers for general public comment.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. A lot of lettuce here. So they're having a great meeting for the public police yesterday, yesterday afternoon. I'm surprised that one of the items they had on the agenda was real estate fraud. And so I was wondering if any of the city council members are concerned about that. I do believe that Mr. Wesson had a problem with a lot of foreclosures on his properties that he had picked up when the city had all the foreclosure problems, and he was able to pick up all these properties on the side. I believe that the, there was a newspaper article that said that he's worth half a billion dollars, which is exactly the same amount of money that, oh, I don't know, the Board of Supervisors giving to buy a hospital, they're giving half a billion dollars in cash. Where'd the money come from? Now is a quick minute.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. That concludes our general public comment. What's next, Mr. Clerk?
Madam President, Council has motions for posting and referral.
Posted and referred. Mr. Rue, did you have an announcement?
Oh, no.
So announcements, members? I'm going to look on my left. Councilman Weezer aside, announcements? And Ms. Martinez? Announcements?
Yes, I have an announcement. If I can please have Stephanie, are you down here? Stephanie, I just, I'm really sad about this, but Stephanie Rivera will be leaving our office. Today's her last day. I know she's like the sweetest. Can we just give a round of applause? I'm really sad about it. So Stephanie has been, has been with our office for almost four and a half years. If you guys recall, I started a fellowship program for young women about five years ago, and Stephanie was one of the first graduates of our Ready for Women's Fellowship, and I hired her right away after she completed the fellowship because she was bright and eager to learn and just really wanted to get involved. She's originally from the city of San Fernando, and, you know, she just wants to move on and do other great things, and she wants to go into the field of higher ed and create policy for, for our kids to be able to enter into the higher ed world and be able to graduate from four-year universities. That's what she wants to focus on, but it just really makes me so sad to let her go because she chose to do this. And so I was like, you know what, I can't hold you back. I just want you to be able to take all the skills that you learned in our office and working with all of your staff here, and I want her to grow and do bigger and better and greater things. So I want to wish her all the best in her new endeavors, and you're going to be sorely missed because she is really a gem and just a pleasure, a pleasure to work with. So big round of applause to Stephanie. We love you.
Thank you, thank you. I just want to invite everyone to a celebration that I've been waiting 16 years to have, and that is the dedication of a brand-new multimodal bridge across the Los Angeles River in Atwater Village. Thank you. It's tomorrow at 11:30 a.m. on the Atwater Village side at the Hyperion Bridge. 16 years in the making. My hair was black in 2004, but this has really been a labor of love led by our own Bureau of Engineering, the community of Atwater Village, and my office, and it's the first new multimodal bridge across the Los Angeles River in anyone's memory, and we have two more on the way. So all are invited. It's going to be a party, it's going to be a celebration. River enthusiasts, wildlife enthusiasts, nature enthusiasts, please come. It'll be a fun celebration, and we can walk back and forth in joy and elation. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other announcements? So if we could all rise, members and rise, audience, if we could all rise for adjournments. Members of the audience, if you could all rise, please. Thank you. And I believe Ms. Martinez has an adjournment.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmembers, I'd like to adjourn in the memory of my really good friend, Mr. Harry Williams. Mr. Williams passed away on Wednesday, January 22nd at the age of 87. Harry was born on December 1st, 1933, in Fort Worth, Texas, and he served as a medic in the Army for two years and moved to California in 1958. He lived in Arlita since 1984, 36 years. He worked several jobs, including being a bus driver or chauffeur in a position at Lockheed. Harry was one of the original founders of the Arlita Lucky Lou's Neighborhood Watch Group. Many of today's active Neighborhood Watch members were recruited by Harry. The Arlita Lucky Lou's just celebrated their 31st anniversary last year in May. As part of his efforts to maintain an active Neighborhood Watch, Harry took it upon himself to beautify his community. Harry worked countless hours for many years cleaning the community, painting graffiti, and inspiring others to join his efforts. Due to his hard work, he inspired Galpin Ford to award him with an electric cart to help him patrol the community and clean it up. Back in June of last year, I'm sorry, of 2018, I requested on the behalf of the community to work on with DOT to dedicate the corner of Beechi and Tarabella in the community of Arlita as the Harry Williams Square, as a small token of our appreciation for all his hard work in beautifying the community of Arlita. The dedication plaque to Harry reads, "The Original Graffiti Buster." To honor the many years of graffiti removal, him and his volunteers dedicated so many years to making sure that we were graffiti-free and our community was kept to making sure that we were graffiti-free and our community was kept beautiful. Harry is one of the original founders of the Arlita Neighborhood Council. He attended countless meetings to create their bylaws in order to create an organization that included all stakeholders in the area. He was the original artist that created the logo for the Arlita Neighborhood Council and their slogan, and his vision for the Neighborhood Council, "The voice for your community" is what he envisioned. During his many years as an active member of the community, he closed, he worked closely with the Foot Hill Division CPAP, and he's held so much, he's really respected by so many officers in the area for all his efforts in ensuring that our community was safe and clean. He is survived by Michelangelo, his children, Michelangelo, Harry, Alex, Gail, Kim, Diana, Sandra, Victoria, and several grandchildren, including his wife, Fanny. And I want to say that I first met Harry when I was in my early twenties, I was working for a council office in 1997, and Harry walked into my office and he said, "Who are you?" And I introduced myself, he goes, "Get in my car, we're going to go, we're going to take a ride along." And he and I became such good friends. He'd take me in his, in his little truck, and basically he'd point out to me, "Your job is to make sure all this graffiti gets cleaned up, these bulky items get picked up," and so on and so forth. And at the beginning, I think I just remember Harry sort of being really stern and mean, and I was like, "Oh, my God, this guy's really going to keep me on my toes." But we became really good friends because he really felt the need to make sure that the community was active, took a proactive approach at making sure his neighborhood was cleaned up. He was a gentle soul and a beautiful, beautiful man. And I, last time I saw him, he was very ill, but he was able to witness the dedication of Harry Williams Square right on the corner of his house. So Fanny, my heart goes out to you. He was a beautiful man, and may he rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez.
Yes, Ms. Martinez, I would like to sign on. I too knew Harry, and he was a man of action. He understood that our roles were to be partners with one another. He was, I remember him from those days in the Arlita Lucky Lou's. He was tenacious, he was, you know, he wanted to get things done, and he was an incredible community partner, so I'd be honored to be added to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other adjournments on, on the right side? Ms. Weezer?
Thank you, Mr. President. And colleagues, I ask that we adjourn today in memory of Alejandro Villegas Lopez. Alejandro peacefully passed away alongside his family in the morning of January 5th. He is survived by his loving wife for 53 years, Alma Belia Buena de Villegas, his children, Alma, Alex, Jorge, and Teresa, son-in-law David and Gustavo, and daughter-in-law Claudia, and numerous grandchildren. Today, we are joined by his daughter, our Public Works Commissioner, Teresa Villegas. Raised in Zacatecas in Sonora, Mexico, Alejandro Villegas immigrated to the United States in 1974, the son of José Antonio Anastasia Villegas. He was an incredibly charismatic person with an ability to engage those around him through his knack of storytelling. He lived a fully-realized life, an amazing 87 years of life. Alejandro was born and lived on Estación de la Colorado, Zacatecas, in Arancho Hacienda, where he enjoyed playing with red soil, swimming, riding horses, and having many wonderful adventures in the outdoors. At the age of 14, his family moved to El Morcio, Sonora, where he graduated from high school. As a student, he was extremely smart and resourceful. He served in the Mexican military, and in his twenties, joined Unisescos World Malaria Eradication Campaign for Latin America, where he toured with his peers throughout the northern Mexico states of Sonora, Sinaloa, Chihuahua, Coalila, Nuevo León, Durango, and Tamalipas, and they all were there to combat the malaria crisis. He then returned to Sonora and helped run the family business. He soon married his loving wife. The newlyweds moved to Baja, California, where they started their family. Shortly after, an opportunity arose where he followed his sisters, who had already immigrated to the United States. Once in the United States, he worked several short stints as a dishwasher and as a contract labor for the aerospace industry. This opportunity eventually landed him a position as a machinist at Sierra Madre Engineering, which merged with Scott Aviation Corporation, where he was ascended as a machinist for the research and development engineering team. Mr. Villegas enjoyed spending time with his family, friends, and work colleagues, and on the weekends, he would visit California beaches and museums. He loved punctuality and was a reliable, dependable, and friendly person. He enjoyed being active and involved in his children's activities in school. He loved animals and pets, who seemed to understand his language, which was due to his time growing up in the rancho. He also volunteered and became politically involved, issuing related ballots by canvassing, phone banking, and getting the vote out for various political campaigns. He was a great individual that when you would meet him and greet him, you would see that he had a gentle and wonderful soul. Mr. Villegas will be remembered for his endless love, kindness, generosity, open-heartedness, and sense of humor and love for your fellow human being. We ask that the council respectfully adjourn in this wonderful person's memory, Mr. Alejandro Villegas Lopez. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weezer. Any other adjournments? Thank you. Members, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.